We'd like to call the meeting into order. Thanks, everyone, for coming.
I'll do it.
Brian, do we have a quorum, please?
Yes. For the record, City Secretary Alicia Smith fell ill this afternoon, and so she's been excused. So, Mr. Mayor, we do have a quorum.
Okay. Would you all rise, please? Join me in a moment of solids. Thank you. Would you please join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Do we have any public comments?
None that I know of, sir.
Okay. First item is to approve the city council meetings, February 9th, 2021. Do we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes for February 9th, 2021.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
I'm abstaining.
Abstain, Nathan. Okay. Thank you. First item on the agenda is Mr. Jake Weber, the city accountant, will give a quarterly financial report. Jake, you're up.
All right. Good evening. I know this is a couple weeks later than normal, I think, just the way that fell on the calendar. So this is going to be as of December 31st, so it gives us a good feel for the first fiscal quarter of this year. Just a few things I wanted to point out, as I usually do, is I kind of run through this, and obviously if there's any questions as I go through, just let me know. We did switch accounting systems this year, so you'll see on the detailed reports, I couldn't do a year-over-year. Just the accounts are different, so just kind of have to work with others, some numbers I'll point out. So, on the front page, just a few things I was going to point out, on your capital project tracker, you can see on the water line, the main thing is just the engineering cost so far on that, is the only thing that's gone up. We haven't paid out too much yet, and that's on the initial amount. The additional $6 million I know that is coming in is not on this. I think that just got funded maybe last week. So on the next financial report, we'll add that figure in on the total proceeds. Looking at the quarter-over-quarter, so just a couple things, like I said, just from a high level, you can kind of see where we're at compared to last year. On the general fund, our revenue is a little bit behind overall, and the expenses are a little bit up. I'm not overly concerned about it. I think it's mostly just a timing thing. When I went and did January, property taxes had caught back up to where they were at. So it just, but if you're looking at it, you can kind of see, you know, we're about $50,000 behind on taxes, and some of our expense items are a little higher. And again, I think a lot of that's personnel costs, salary timing, payroll cycles, things like that, so...
We had additional payrolls than we did last year.
Yeah, so it's a timing, and as I kind of looked through January, a lot of that had caught up. So I'm not real concerned about it, but when you look at the bottom line, quarter-over-quarter, you can see where we're, you know, $250,000 less, but there's some reasons for that. And I'm just going to look, so on page two, so the first page of the detailed report, just a couple items I wanted to point out. So if you look at M&amp;O, we're at $883,000. Last year, we're at $979,000. So that's where, and again, it's just timing. By the time January hit, we were caught back up. So I think we'll probably, usually we're right on budget on that, so I'm not really concerned there, but it just, you know, kind of be aware of that. Sales tax, so we were at $336,000. Last year, we were at $292,000. So that one is trending up. And then the other one, so if you look, building permits, we're at $133,000 this year. Last year, we were $185,000 this time. So that one, we had some big ones at the beginning of last year that hit, so we don't, you know, that's, again, those are kind of one times sometimes, depending on the development coming in. So that's kind of some reasons why some changes there. The other thing is, towards the bottom of that page, we have the coronavirus relief fund, so we got $60,000 in, and I believe we're getting more, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
It was about 200 and, I want to say 250.
Okay, okay, gotcha. So that's something to keep an eye on. Obviously, another, some additional revenue that you had there. On the expense side, so really, on the general fund, there really wasn't anything out of the ordinary on the expenses besides your normal operations, you know. There wasn't any real anomalies that I saw, and again, if you guys have questions on a specific line item, just let me know. So again, you know, like I said, I think we're in good shape, it just, we're a little behind for a couple reasons on that. Just looking at, so this is going to be on page seven, on your water fund, just to give you a frame of reference. So our user charges this year were at $541,875. Last year, we were at $546,124. We're right on on that. I mean, we're just barely ahead there. The biggest difference year-over-year, so last year, we had some of those bigger capital expenditures at the beginning of the year for some of the water improvements, things like that, that we don't have this year. So that will help out on that. Wastewater, same thing. We're very close. We're user charges this year at $147,600, last year, we were at $148,600. So, on our enterprise funds, you're very close there. Again, nothing major. The biggest difference is going to be some of the debt service schedules, things like that, but you guys, we're aware of those. Just looking at the cash balances, you can kind of see on that, you know, we're still, you know, you're good position on cash. You know, just to give you, again, an idea, general fund operations, last year, you're at $774,000. This year, you've got $602,000 in that operating account. So, just something we'll kind of keep an eye on, but like I said, with those extra funds, I think we'll be fine there. And you can see, you have some surplus in your water fund that gives you some flexibility on some projects. We've talked about that in the past as well. The only other thing, and this is on the front page too, you can see, like the Techstar Parks and Rec, we paid some engineering cost out of that. I think that started at about $500,000. It may have gotten to about $512,000 with interest. So you can see, we've started to pay that down, and start to pay some expenses out of that, is what that's kind of going. Any questions on anything there? Like I said, there's nothing really out of the ordinary, just kind of some things I wanted to point out.
I think it's good.
Okay, that's good.
Thanks, Jake.
Yep.
Item number two, to consider an act on rewarding a contract for a city hall needs assessment. Mr. Grimes?
Yes. Let me pull this up real quick. Thank you. Back in the fall, the city hall committee put together a RFQ for qualifications for a needs assessment. Essentially, the needs assessment would evaluate the current facility and then take input from the committee and bring us back suggestions and recommendations for either renovation of this current facility or construction of a new facility. We budgeted about $25,000 in the budget for this, and so we put the RFQ out. We received a number of proposals from firms. I think we received 16 in all. The city hall committee reviewed and ranked the 16 proposals, and the recommendation of the city hall committee is to award that bid to Jacob and Martin for professional design services. And I put a copy of Jacob and Martin's proposal in front of you guys. All the applicants were qualified, very, very good. At the end of the day, I think familiarity with Jacob and Martin proved to be a benefit to us.
Okay, do we have any questions for Brian, or do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve Jacob and Martin for the contract for city hall needs assessment.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? This also is unanimous for the...
From the committee.
From the committee.
Yes.
All in favor? Thank you. Item number three, discuss and take action. The city council will conduct a public hearing regarding the adoption of an ordinance adopting the Municipal Drainage Utility Systems Act, Subchapter C, Local Government Code, Chapter 552, and declaring the city's drainage system to be a public utility so that the city may reestablish rates and charges to be charged by the city's municipal drainage utility system. Following the public hearing, the city council may adopt the ordinance, adopting the Municipal Drainage Utility Systems Act, Subchapter C, Local Government Code, Chapter 552, and declaring the city drainage, city's drainage system to be a public utility so that the city may establish rates and charges to be charged by the city's municipal drainage utility system. The public hearing is open at 7:10 PM. We have someone to speak, Mr. Warner Schmidt?
This gentleman here, in uniform as well. I don't think there's any other speakers, so...
Does anyone wish to speak on this agenda, on this issue?
I don't think it's necessary for me to speak.
Okay. All right. There's no other...
Do you want me to talk about it at all, or...
You're welcome to. Yes.
This first step, this is a two-step process to basically establish charges for our drainage system. So this first public hearing is on the ordinance that basically will adopt the Municipal Drainage Utility Systems Act and then also declare our drainage system to be a public utility. And so that's what this first public hearing is. And the ordinance in your packet basically sets out the authority that once we adopt this ordinance, and then we'll have a second public hearing tonight on the drainage charges, so it authorizes this council to levy a schedule of charges. We'll also have exemptions, and we'll go through those, and we go through the rates in the next public hearing. We'll have a process in the ordinance to appeal any kind of charges assessed against properties within the city limits of Willow Park. And that's what, the only properties that we're having for an inventory are within the city limits only. And basically, this is the first step, again, to basically create a public utility in our drainage system for stormwater. So if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer it.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Public hearing is closed at 7:12 PM. We have a motion to adopt the ordinance.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Willow Park, Texas, amending the code of ordinances of the city by amending Chapter 13 Utilities to add Article 13.13 to establish a municipal drainage utility system, providing for drainage service, billing, exemptions, drainage charges, and appeals, providing a repealing clause, providing a severability clause, providing a savings clause, providing for a penalty in an amount not to exceed the sum of $2,000, and providing for an effective date.
Second. We have a motion. We have a second. Any other questions or discussion?
I would just like to say, this has been a long process getting to here. We started with a drainage study report by Jacob Martin over a year ago to identify all of our problems within the city. Mr. Warner Schmidt and I have spoken. He has a particular piece of property that is affected by this. We understand what we need to do. We simply have no way to fund the drainage problems that we've had. And so, having this system set up to allow our funds to be used for drainage projects instead of taking it out of reserves, which could be used for other things such as roads, one of the reasons I've been promoting this is we just have a lot of things that we need to do, and this is the best way to go about funding them, rather than having to piecemeal our drainage projects like we've had to do a couple of times in the last few years for things that were just flat-out emergency situations. So, it's one of the reasons I support it. I'm not ever thrilled that we have to assess new fees or rates or anything like that, but we simply have problems we have to take care of, and this is the best way to do it. And I've had quite a few citizens request drainage improvements. I have yet to have one citizen come to me and say that they oppose this ordinance. So, I think we've given ample opportunity for people to speak out on this, and I haven't heard a word other than in support of it. So, that's the reason I made the motion to support this. So, that's my decision.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Yes, Greg.
I'm sorry?
Greg's second.
Greg's second. I'm sorry. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Very good. Thank you, Leo. Item number four, the city council will conduct a public hearing on proposed rates and charges to be charged by the city's municipal drainage utility system. Following the public hearing, the city council may adopt a resolution establishing the rates and charges to be charged by the city's municipal drainage utility system. The public hearing is open at 7:15 PM. Pat?
I think Derek's going to address the rates.
Derek?
Thank you. I'm going to be going through briefly the rehash of the rate structure, the way it was set up, and the recommended rates as they're laid out in the drainage study report that we did, or the, excuse me, the utility rates study report that we did. If you recall, the rates are set up, as has been mentioned, to fund the operation of the drainage utility system as well as debt service for the capital improvements that were identified in the drainage study that was referred to earlier. The basis that we use to apply the rates was on a living area basis for residential, and more particularly on standard, on a single-family unit concept that is, in this case, would be 1,500 square feet. So a single-family residence that's 1,500 square feet would be one SFU, one single-family unit. For commercial property, and that was also, by the way, that would carry over to institutional as well, the way we've set up the recommendation for institutional being churches, schools, and that type of entity. Commercial is based, and is typically based on impervious cover, not building square footage. So, the rate for the, for the commercial properties would be a little bit different. The calculations for each, again, is based on the SFU. A single-family unit, as I mentioned, is one SFU for a 1,500-square-foot home. Multifamily is the same calculation, except apartments and things like that tend to have larger impervious footprints. So there's a 1.5 multiplier applied to that one. Institutional is a straight SFU calculation, just like a residential home, except it's based on building square footage, since it's not a residence or there's no living area. Commercial, again, is based on square footage. The recommended rates, excuse me, are $5.50 per SFU for residential. I'll get there in just a minute. And again, that's for residential and institutional. Commercial would be $0.0055 per square foot of impervious cover. And again, that, our forecast, based on the determinations we made when the initial setup is done, would be in the neighborhood of about $175,000 per year, based on those fees and the amount of services that we have in town. Just as, just as a comparison, in the report that you looked at earlier last year, in the first appendix, there are comparable fee structures for other communities in the area. They range anywhere from about $1.50 per dwelling unit, not single-family unit, but dwelling unit, so everybody pays the same, up to well over $8 per family unit. So the $5.50 is about the middle of the road, probably a little bit over because it's based on SFU in this case, but it's roughly 50, 50% of the median. So, as an example, Hudson Oaks charges $5.60 for SFU, so that's your closest comparison. Debt service for the CIP, based on the projects that we showed, ultimately would run about $250,000 per year, so that was kind of the basis for how we backed into that number, and that's where we came from. That's the short of it. Is there any questions?
Mayor, can I add something?
Sure.
And counsel, what you have to implement these rates is a resolution, and those charges that Derek explained are attached as Exhibit 8 to the resolution. And so, it will be a motion to adopt that resolution, should you so desire.
Does it have, I'm sorry, does it have a number?
It doesn't, you don't need to read the background. I would point out that both this rate charge has been published three times in the newspaper in its entirety, as well as the ordinance adopting the Municipal Drainage System Act as well. So, we've had six publications of those in the newspaper.
Did we have any public speakers requesting for this hearing?
Derek, good job. Thank you.
Can I speak on that? Did we go past it when she just asked about public speakers?
We don't have to have a phone for public hearing, do we?
I'm sorry? Yes, you can say something.
I was just curious if, you know, I have a farm, so I have barns, there's some old parking lots there, and I was wondering, you know, if there's an agricultural exemption that could be put into this bill. I mean, I live there at the farm. It's not like I'm making a lot of money, but, you know, this is going to add up for me, I think.
I don't believe, I think, again, it's based on living area and not impervious cover. I think in your case...
That applies to me. I mean, you know where I'm at. I'm at the shrimp farm, down at Harrison Equipment, eight acres, you know, Harrison that paid, you know, some...
So it's a commercial operation?
It's an agriculture operation. I'm licensed by the Department, Texas Department of Agriculture.
Probably going to fit out of the commercial, I would assume, the operation part, the home, you have a home on the same piece of property?
I live there, you know, generally on the agricultural farms, it's considered a residence, not commercial. So that's why I'm wondering if you could add into this to exempt, or at least, you know, make me where I would pay just the residential, because it is my home.
Let me explain how exemptions, we don't get to make up exemptions as far as, you know, we talked about for people over 65. That's not in the statute. The statute basically provides that we may exempt state property, county property, municipal property, or school district property. We shall exempt, however, property that has its own wholly sufficient drainage system. We shall exempt property that's in its natural state, has not been improved, and we shall exempt any subdivided lot that is basically vacant. And so, those are the only exemptions.
Okay, well, I do have a retention fund that I built, so maybe that would follow by that I'm holding up water to make equal to the amount of water that would run off from my home.
This ordinance will do is it will give, it has an appeals process. So what you can do is, is once we get your bill to you, you can appeal that bill, and so work with city staff to figure out exactly how it fits within the equation.
But thank you.
So, Pat, if I can understand, you're saying that we can pass the resolution and that there's an appeals process that would essentially be for individual cases?
That's in the ordinance itself, adopting the utility system. And so it basically provides that if you can prove that you fit one of the exemptions, then that is a basis for appeal.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Derek. Do we have a motion, please?
We need to close the public hearing, sir.
I'm sorry?
We need to close the public.
Public hearing is closed at 7:24 PM. Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve a resolution of the city council of the city of Willow Park, Texas, adopting the Municipal Drainage Utility System Schedule of Charges, establishing charges for municipal drainage utility system services, providing a repealing clause, and providing an effective date.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Thank you, Derek, for your work. Item number five, to discuss and take action on approving resolution for the formal adoption of the Hazard Mitigation Plan. Chief, you're up.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and citizens. Basically, this item is to discuss and take action on the approved resolution for the formal adoption of our Hazard Mitigation Plan. Fire Captain Junker's been working on this for a few months, two years now, and we would really appreciate the approval for the resolution to seal the deal on this. And available for any questions.
I just want to say thank you for all the work you put into it.
This came at no cost. It would have been $5,000.
Very good. Great work. Do we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion that we approve a resolution of the city of Willow Park adopting the 2021 Parker County Hazard Mitigation Action Plan.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion for Mike? All in favor? Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Item number six, to consider an act on items to be considered for future council meetings.
Before I go to my list, does anybody have anything that they... Okay, I'll do my list.
I'll hear your list first.
Yes. So the next meeting will be March 9th, that'll be item seven. But we will have an audit done by our accountant. We also have some surplus property from the fire department that we need to approve to be sold. We will have a discussion on improvement, capital improvement projects, and the funding options for that as well. And then one other note is, and I'm working with bond counsel on this, we are scheduled to go to the Water Development Board to be approved for funding at the April 8th meeting in Austin. They moved us back from the March meeting to the April meeting. That's just, they're just running behind. I was going to ask bond counsel if we could start the notice process at March 9th, and that would shorten the window by about two weeks. Excuse me, it would make it a two-week window versus a 45-day window. Put notes in the paper that we intend to issue debt to CO, just like we did with the Fort Worth Water Project. I was going to get her, I was hoping to get her opinion on that before tonight. I did not. So we may have that on there to start the notice process.
Anything else?
I will add that something I'd like to, we've discussed in the past, is updating our comprehensive plan. So I'd like council to consider if we could fit that in in some way or another during the next year. So that's just something that, put it on the radar to get that updated so that we have an updated comp plan.
It's, yeah, it's been seven years since the comp plan's been updated. I ran that by Derek this afternoon. He gave me very, very definite, let me get back to you.
Okay. I think we're in a mode now that we've got some wastewater permits in, and we're not going full bore on water projects, planning stages, or getting more to construction. So it might be a good time to get some planning of our comp planning, so.
Counsel, I'd also like to point out the impact fee ordinance. Right now, tentatively, we've ended up pushing it back. We have P and Z as acting as our advisory committee on the impact fees is going to meet on March 16th. So they'll give input on our land use assumptions and our capital improvements program. It'll come to y'all probably at our 23rd meeting. And then we'll set a public hearing 30 days later to begin adoption of our impact fee ordinance.
And that's just for new development?
Correct.
Yes.
I'd like to recognize the Lidl Bearcat team for the 10th championship proclamation to do that.
Hey, Pat? How many state championships has Brownwood had?
Anything else?
Yeah, Brian, we were talking a little bit about maybe putting some sort of assessment together of the impact of the winter storm that hit the city, and what damages we incurred, and the costs, and if there's any way to get funding from FEMA or whatever else might be in place. Just kind of know what that is and see if, moving forward for years up ahead, if there's anything we can do to prevent stuff like that from happening, if there's anything we can do from a city perspective.
So in my comments, I was going to put later, but I'll do them now, as far as that issue goes. We have a number of key staff in Public Works that are actually on vacation. So when they return next week, we plan on doing a tabletop exercise. I don't know if we'll have recommendations by the 9th, but I do know we'll have them by the 23rd.
Okay.
Michelle and I have had some discussions internally as far as what we can do to prevent, or I don't say prevent, that's what's wrong about it, to help mitigate a future situation like that.
Thank you.
Can I mention what we were discussing with the churches?
Sure.
I reached out to some churches in the area, and we're setting up a meeting in a couple of weeks to consider and discuss some outlets in the city having generators that the city could maybe partner with them. So if we ever have an outage like this again, we'll have facilities with power. So we're looking at three or four different venues. And I think we, Rose, when do we set that up?
March 9th.
March 9th. We'll be meeting with them, with Brian, the chief, and discuss something that we might be able to do so that this doesn't happen again. I mean, it may not be us, it may be a whatever.
Funding.
Summertime.
Could be anything. So some, we have facilities that have power. So we're starting that discussion. Anything else? Okay, next council meeting, March 9th?
March 9th, 2021.
7:00 PM. Okay. Mayor's comments. I'd like to thank Michelle, Michelle still here? Michelle, thank you for you and your guys for the job you did this past week. I know it was around the clock because I was close with Brian, and you guys put in a lot of hours, and we appreciate the work very much. So we'll recognize them maybe at the next meeting.
That's the plan, yes, sir.
Okay, good. But I appreciate you doing, and Brian was there helping them also. So that's all I have. Mr. Brian?
Any council member have any comments?
Yeah, I just want to thank the entire staff and you, Brian, for everything that the city did this past week. Just stepped up to the plate and took care of the people here in this city. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Graham?
Couple of things. I don't think in my tenure as city manager that I've ever seen and experienced anything like this. And late Thursday night, we had a meeting with Public Works when we think we were coming around, and we could see the light at the end of the tunnel, and it wasn't a train because the power was on. We were having kind of an after-action meeting, and it was very cool to see these guys that really haven't been here that long work hand-in-hand together. And I'm a sports guy, so, you know, use whatever sports analogy you prefer. But it was really good to see that team come together and gel like that. The Public Works Department logged hundreds of hours, mostly putting in 18- to 20-hour days for six straight days, and sleeping at the well site, in trucks, and in cots in the Public Works Building. I know about half of them actually slept in conditions that were not ideal for days on end. They were innovative in how they attacked the situation. The best way I could describe it, if you've ever seen the movie Apollo 13, where they would fix something, and then something else would break, and they'd fix it. That was what we were doing here. At one point, we acquisitioned the mayor's electric blanket. I don't know if the mayor's wife knows it's missing yet. We used it to actually thaw out pipes. And so that's what these guys of 30-something kids, and I call them kids, was doing to solve this problem, to keep water flowing to the city. But it just so it wasn't Public Works. The fire department logged 49 calls in six days. That's compared to 66 calls the entire month of January. So they've done almost a month's worth of work in one week. The police department conducted welfare checks on areas without power and water, and transported one suicidal individual while maintaining 24/7 staffing. And I want to say that while Public Works was here, and they didn't really have to go back and forth from their residences because we kept them here, PD and fire had to travel through these conditions to come back here and serve the public. And I don't think that should go unnoticed. And finally, our communications department reached 65,000 social media individual accounts that week versus 2,500 normally during a one-week period. And it had an average 11-minute resolution time for questions and concerns. Guys, this is what your city has done for you when a crisis hit, and we didn't know it was going to hit. And we did this on cell phones, we did this at kitchen tables, we did this at a public safety building. The fire department housed the ambulance service for three days, I believe. Public Works came and took showers at the public safety building because it was the only time that they could really have any sort of moments for hygiene. And so this city, the city staff, I'm, it's cliche to say this, but I'm very proud of these guys. I'm very proud of my department heads. I'm very proud of the guys, the way they attacked this problem. And they never stopped working the problem. And they always tried to find a solution. At no point did anyone, it's 3 o'clock in the morning, a generator goes out, and at no point did the guy say, oh, well, guess we just won't have sewer today. They did yeoman's work. Part of that is, I want to thank Jim Martin, who supplied a generator at 3:00 AM in the morning so the water didn't back up into Tyler Van Zant's house and Nathan Krummel's house because that's what was going to happen. I want to thank Corey Tucker. When we needed to get a message out, there's an old saying in city management, if you want to sell more water, tell people to conserve. And we put a conservation message out, and within an hour, the tower got hit. So I want to thank Corey Tucker and his, he contacted all the HOAs and got them to get onto the conservation message. That was probably one of the biggest things that kept us off of a boil-water notice. I want to thank James Hotop over at the City of Weatherford. When we needed a secondary generator in a pinch, James called me up, said, I've got one, come pick it up. And so I want to thank James for his contribution to this effort. And I want to thank Drew Springer and his leadership, and how he's managed this crisis in Austin. But I want to give a strong message to Phil King. Phil King was instrumental in getting the power turned on to at least six of our wells. And we emailed his staff and said, if I don't have power in the next four hours, we're going to be without water. Power was on within about two. And they never went off to those critical pieces of infrastructure. And so while we hope we never go through this again, you've got a good team here at City Hall, you've got a good team in Austin. We have great relationships with our neighbors and our neighboring communities who are willing to step up and help. And you have great leadership inside this community that may not necessarily be on this council. But to the people watching, to the people in the gallery, I want to tell you, you've got a great city council sitting here. Because everything that I've mentioned tonight, as far as this last seven days go, none of that, none of that is possible if you don't have the leadership that you have sitting up here on this dais. They gave us the tools to be there when this thing hit. They encouraged us to solve problems, and we wanted to be good for them. And so for you guys on council, thank you. Thank you for believing us, and thank you for giving us the tools.
Thank you.
Very good. Anything else? Motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Good night, Irene. Thank you.
Mike's alive until I get the video off.
I think there's a song like that, isn't it?
That was the closing song of My Bar and College.